To look at what it is we do, how we operate as a board, how we, how we're doing, what we could do better as a board. So if everyone can just take a couple of minutes, there's just a few policies here that are in here to read through since we probably haven't had them in advance. What we've done in the past is just kind of thrown it out to each person to say what they want to say.
Have you done, have you used the exhibit that's part of the policy as part of the self-evaluation as well? Or is that just as a guide to the type of one we may create in the future?
You know, I don't recall that we've used that.
Have we ever formally evaluated ourselves or even informally?
We do informally. But my recollection is that we have just sort of talked about what we do informally, what we do well, what we can do better. I don't know that it's always been productive, so.
When did we, when did we have we done that? What time is it?
Supposed to do it annually.
Last year we did it at the assessment. And this instrument was in place already. This is something that kind of new, well, 2010 when ASB did a conference and they added this exhibit. And from my remember, the last year, you know, Carl Giacharo, he really introduced the instrument. It was just kind of, you know, glance at it and, you know, kind of like, you know, have a conversation. Have a conversation. And it didn't return because you guys are volunteers.
Yeah. We're not gonna.
Get fired.
Yeah.
But they might remember.
Yeah.
Well, I mean technically we don't, the policy says we have to evaluate ourselves by October 30th. So we could just take a look at this today, kind of just maybe scan the exhibit, see if this is exhibit that's aligned to what we want to do and then maybe we'll put this on another agenda item to actually do the self-evaluation, right? So this is just an awareness information. Because we're not, are we agendized to act on our self-evaluation today?
Well.
Actually self-evaluate?
Whether we were or not, we can always not act on an action item. But, I mean, we can always go to table it, but.
Or we're not, we're not voting and we have to be brought back
That's true.
An agenda item.
That's true.
Or you guys can just choose to kind of just talk about it and that's your, that's your review.
Yeah.
You know, it's not something that you have to do. You know, nobody's gonna come and say, hey, you guys can do your
Self-evaluation, please?
You know, so this is, so every year, you know, we kind of bring it in now, you know, just because now we have the time. You know, whereas once we get more closer to October, we're doing other stuff. So, you know, from last year, what I remember is, you know, you guys just discussed it some and, you know, you guys are done for the year.
And we don't have, sorry, we don't have anything in policy now that talks about board evaluation, correct?
Well, this is only, this is the only policy we have on board evaluation.
Just the 0100 on the green sheet there, the first.
Oh, it says A, Arizona School Boards Association at the top. That's why it's throwing me off. So this is exactly what our policy says?
This is our policy, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, many, most of our policies have that at the top of it.
Yeah, and if it says ASB, that means ASB supports it.
Gotcha.
Whereas if it doesn't, it doesn't mean that ASBA does not support it.
That's why you, okay, that's why it's on there. Thank you for the clarification. Now I'm looking at the bottom of the page and it has their name on it. So it happens late in the day.
And it does say that the procedures may include but are not limited to, and then it's all those bullet points within the policy. So it could be goal setting, it could be, you know, our relationships with each other, with superintendent.
I guess that as a new board member, one of my questions would be outside of the work that we obviously do with administration and looking at the district strategic plan and goals and so on. Does, has the governing board in the past set its own series of goals for which we would self-evaluate? Like being able to, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head what a particular goal would be that would be specific to our interactions either with one another or with the superintendent or with creating, you know, a certain number of, you know, does that make sense? Or is it just?
Been here around for a long time. And I think there was a time in which the board set goals, but they were kind of operational goals in terms of how they operated and that type of thing. But I can't be specific on that. But I do recall it was one board, one year, that kind of did something like that.
I don't remember us having anything that sticks out in my mind as being really controversial.
This, this may have been before Shar's time too.
Wow.
That's how long ago it was.
Before her time as superintendent.
Yes, that's.
Not before the year, it wasn't the year before I was in Florida.
Jim remembers that well.
I mean, if we look at the exhibit and some of the items for which if we were to use this exhibit to evaluate our effectiveness, I mean, there are some things that I can see, you know, obviously that might be linked to a governing board goal, like attending X number of, you know, community connection meetings in an academic year or calendar year. Or specifically under relationships to the instructional program where we're talking about periodic visitations to schools. And, you know, do we want to maybe think about setting, you know, each board member attends or visits X number of schools or X number of school visits so that we can help kind of guide some of those? Because I mean, I certainly have my own kind of personal roles in terms of what I want to be able to do. But I don't know if that necessarily means that that has to be a governing board's goal or that you all need to sanction my individual personal goals, which I'm happy to let you if you'd like to. But, you know, I think if we're going to use an exhibit, then we might, might want to walk backwards from what some of these questions and say, okay, well, does that require us to have established that we're gonna actually do some of these things or not? Because I wouldn't, I would hate for us to give ourselves an unsatisfactory mark. As an example, the board makes an effort to keep informed by doing periodic school visits. And somebody say, well, I didn't do any visits because I didn't know that I was supposed to be, but that was an expectation or that that was something that we had all committed to doing. Just keying in on one that's a more actionable one that I could think about.
I don't know if people just want to shout out their thoughts on any of these, but I think that we have been good at looking at under A, number four, the board communicates the views of personnel effectiveness, including views related to the superintendent in a confidential and professional manner. I don't think, you know, we haven't had shouting matches. We haven't had people get personal. We haven't, I think we've dealt with each other professionally. We've had the right level of confidentiality. I don't see, so you don't know what you don't know, but, you know, we've followed rules, legal procedures. We have, we've done legal trainings for new board members, for all of us and refreshers with our attorney Jennifer Mafan, and so that we know what we need to know related to open meeting law, that we're in strong compliance. And I think in terms of one of the issues, the greatest issue or weakness, I don't know if it's a weakness necessarily, it can be opportunities, is that we do have a largely new board. And now when I came on the board, the people who were on there had been there, let's see, eight years, 10 years, four years and about five years. So, you know, no one had less than four years of experience being on that board. And, okay, no, I don't know, I've said before at this meeting, but this is probably my last term on the, so next year will probably be my last year on the governing board. So I imagine we'll have still new member or members after the next, you know, governing, next election. So I think making sure that we have some sort of continuity is important in some sense of history and why we're, what some of the issues are.
Well, and that might actually speak to maybe establishing some more concrete public governing board goals for this year as we transition so that, you know, that it's not just, well, this is kind of the way we did it before, obviously. Like you said, there's an opportunity there because we can sort of, you know, learn together and establish things. But there's also that concern about continuity, so.
I don't see any areas where I would look at this evaluation and say that we are unsatisfied or anything. I think a lot of these, they're not broader goals in kind of the strategic planning sense, but they're kind of goals in terms of the how do you decently operate and deal with each other sense. And I think that we've, you know, this might be something that we should, I don't know, this may be something that at some point we, before we do the evaluation that we hand out, or maybe we hand this out to new board members as it's a way of, you know, what you're, what it is that is expected of you.
I mean, I don't necessarily think that the term, you know, major problems is, you know, I don't think that, like you said, I don't think there are any problems. I think that there are opportunities maybe around, I mean, some things that, the more I'm reading through this, that I'm thinking about, you know, I think it's, some of our opportunities are visiting and engaging our schools by going out and, you know, and I would personally like to set, you know, a goal for myself around, you know, visiting every campus at least once a quarter to be able to visit the administration, you know, do classroom walk-throughs and observations just to see what's going on. You know, again, I don't know if that's a reasonable goal or expectation for all of the other board members, given, you know, everybody's work impediment and schedule and so on. But maybe it's a minimum of a certain number of visits to campuses during an academic year. I also like having the opportunity, just me personally, at least one read of items before a vote. And I think we've almost always consistently done that where we've had an agenda item that's informational with a presentation and then the expectation that at the following subsequent meeting, we would take action or vote on it if it was appropriate. Because I think that that makes for not a rushed decision. And so I think, I don't know if that's an actual policy.
Well, in terms of adopting policies, we do that. But in terms of making other decisions, we may not. But I think we've done a better job of that than times that I've seen in the past where that was a concern that I had previously.
So I don't know if that would be even a goal that we wanted to put in place that, you know, that our goal is that we at least have two reads of information that comes before us prior to, you know, one presentation and then a final vote or something. Because I don't want, I understand that with, there are some things that are just kind of emergency or so timely that that's not possible. But to the extent that we can, I would feel like I'm making better decisions, not having to just get the packet of information, you know, a few days before or on the day of the meeting, having to absorb and process and synthesize what the issue is and then making a decision I'd like. That we've had opportunities for lots of discussion and dialogue and brought things back for a vote. So I don't know if we need to codify that in our goals as a board or if we can just make that more informal.
Maybe just the mere fact that we're having this conversation is an opportunity for us to reflect and move forward. Jeannie, Tiffany, any other thoughts on our performance as a board? Things we could do better, things we should do, shouldn't do? Is it what, for those of you who are new, is it what you expected or not?
You mean being on the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, just a huge learning curve, yeah. Lots of procedural stuff, you know?
Yeah.
Just understanding and legal issues and what you can talk about and who you can go to dinner with, you know, and stuff like that, so, yeah.
We, this can be whatever we make it. So if no one has anything else to say, we don't have to. So with that, since I don't hear any other conversation.
So if we want, if we wanted to, and I don't want to define anything today, but if we wanted to come back and maybe create a few overarching goals, I mean, just to cite this as an example. I'm really passionate about the fact that I think for us to know what we're doing about teaching and learning, we should be seeing kids and teachers and administrators in action. And even if that was the only goal that we created for ourselves as a board, I think that's a place to start. Would we, I mean, I'm happy to draft a, a draft of a governing board goal to that end and then get it to Hilda to share with us and then maybe we can talk about it in a future meeting and take action on it. Or if there's other ones that I think are compelling or making. I like just this discussion and dialogue. I, you know, certainly don't think I've been on the board long enough to really be able to rate my, you know, give a strong perspective on any of, most of these items. But, you know, I do think that if I peruse the list, I feel pretty confident about what the board's done, at least in the time that I've been here. But do you think that there are some, we want to model goal setting for our teachers and our leaders in our schools. We, we probably ought to have some or maybe at least one of our own. So are you guys okay with me sort of drafting some language and then we can work with it maybe at the next meeting or the following meeting depending on our agenda? Because I know the, the coming meeting on, I don't mean this Tuesday. Remember the, the next one, the 20th, is it 20th?
20th.
Yeah, 20th. Okay. So I'll draft something, send it to Hilda and then we can, you know, put it on the agenda for the 20th. I will write, I'll write a little yellow card. So it's not even too long, I can fit it on this little space.
I like that goal a lot because in the past, not all board members have felt that was important and not all their board members had done that. And I think by us putting it in writing and discussing it, maybe it'll set a precedent for new board members in the future to know that, you know, this is what we expect of board members to be better at what they do and have a better understanding of what's happening in the future.
Do you guys have any feedback around like the number or the intervals? Or, I mean, because obviously, Jeannie, you're in class, you're teaching your own classroom during the day. So I want to be, you know, respectful of the fact that it may be hard for you to come do classroom walkthroughs and observations because your, you know, the nature of your job is a lot different than, you know, mine as an example, where I can just schedule it when I want to put it on the calendar, so.
I don't, I mean, but it's still doable. It definitely is. Or, you know, even if I can't, maybe I can't make as many classroom visits as people, but I can still attend concerts or something.
Attend events or something, yeah.
Go to community council, you know, I try to go to every community council. I'll miss one last year, I was like getting married or something.
So then I'll make it general, broad enough that it'll capture multiple engagements with our schools and our community.
I like that. I, having just switched jobs and having not much PTO right now, it's just, but it's still something I want to do. I have over the years. That doesn't mean that I shouldn't continue to do so. But one of my, well, I have a goal of visiting at least one other school outside of this district because I think there are other things on the districts to do from that we should learn from. And some of them are issues that are very similar to what we're dealing with, so. Okay, so is there anything else to be said about this? If not, then although we don't normally do anything on the agenda earlier than it says, I think future agenda items is probably okay. Because probably nobody is going to come and speak to it as an agenda item. And that's the purpose.
And you know what, even if they do, they'd be here in five minutes, so we'd still be able to squeeze them in.
Exactly, exactly. We can repeat what we, so I'm gonna move us into future agenda items. And I think a bunch of us have cards filled out. I already have one that Net left with me that I will give to you, Hilda, that relates to teacher retention. And then I'm adding an overview of the procurement process. And I have this filled out because I feel like a lot of us don't know what it is. They're all coming to me.
Do you want us to send it to?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know if we have to, do we?
Do you want an explanation of anything before we send it around?
Do we need to?
Or no?
Do we just need to fill out since everyone sort of filled out these?
So you just fill out the form and, um?
As long as we can get back to you or get these.
Yeah, okay.
Hilda did, so as long as it's already.
You said a lot of background, Jim. I made it really clear.
Is that one or two?
This is the details of one.
This is also a follow-up?
No, that's a separate one.
Oh.
Jim said make it really clear, is that a bit?
He was told there was a backside. They may regret that.
I know, it's recorded, but I.
So.
We have big handwriting, it's really all those things.
So it's, it's up to you, Matt, if you want to, like the heading you can, or you guys just.
Okay, so I've heard that that is good. So I mentioned the one that Annette left. I don't know where, whichever order I put it in there it was. My overview of the procurement process. And we've in the past looked at an overview of the governing board's budget, which is very, very little to show that we, but I think it helps us to say that, you know, we make a 0.2% of the district's budget and just, so we know what we spend on going to ASBA, NSBA, et cetera. I would like to discuss and put on professional agreements with teachers. Doesn't have to be an action item, but actually we probably should have discussion and potential action in case we decided to do that. Just like to know what other districts are doing. I have listed here a, an information session on district-wide PLCs with consideration of Richard DeFor.
The Sunday, these are.
That one, okay. His recommendations, okay. And that was given to, is this one mine? Come on, Bernd, you can read it.
I, I brought the article.
Yeah, she, I didn't, I didn't have it electronically.
Okay, that would be.
Electronic version of it and Hilda has a copy of it, it's what.
Okay, well, I'm fine reading the paper, Richard, just as long as I'm not stealing Tiffany's. I have presentation of differentiated teacher-led PD, which I, it's that professional development classroom.
I'm sorry, classroom teacher.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was like a, or there.
It's like it's right here.
Presentation of differentiated classroom teacher-led professional development.
There you go.
Okay, cool. Solar projects, vote on soliciting bids from the companies. And the utilities. So I don't know if that's something that we need to schedule at a certain period of time. On the solar project proposals, forsake of scheduling that. I'm just confused on timelines if there's something we need to be doing. Well, this has last meeting in August, so I'd like to at least put a placeholder on there for, you've mentioned last meeting in August. And then if that's.
It should only take two weeks for them to respond to proposal. Proposal, especially since they have a heads-up writing, at least for them.
Okay, so that was, I guess the question is on solar, would the RFP have to go out for, well, this may be something that we deal with. Dr. Boyle, on how we put, set up the agenda.
We don't have to, we don't need to.
Correct. So I have the Arizona K-12 Center presentation by a Kathy Webke. Okay. I have, this one has pen all over it. Student achievement update as a regular agenda item. Isn't that the one that's also continued on the back?
Yes, it does happen.
Move on when reading update. I have a community education program update and a governing board goal setting.
See, the other ones are shorter.
So we'll have plenty on future agenda items. So I can give these to Hilda. It's now 4:15, so if she wants to come in and speak to this, they have the opportunity.
I don't necessarily use the future agenda item, but I did just, I read this article and it was about school in England switching all of their, they switched to Linux as an operating system rather than Mac or PC. And I don't want to necessarily put it on agenda item or anything, but I just want everybody to maybe like think about the cost of Mac products compared to PCs. And just like, you know, the possibility if we were able to do something like that or use Google Docs or, you know, there's so many open source opportunities out there. And I know my husband's a software engineer and he just beats it down my, over my head or whatever, you know, he's constantly talking about innovation and technology like that. But just because we're facing all these really severe budget constraints in Arizona, thinking about that as an option to save money and to, I don't know, go to, go to more widely used interfaces and open source solutions. So I don't really know how to put it on a future agenda item or who could speak to it yet, you know what I mean? I don't know who would do the presenting. But I know it's very difficult in this district because somewhere down the road, somebody decided that Macs, you know, were the way to go, but they're just so much less cost-effective than PCs. You know what I mean?
So this sounds familiar. Did we put something about open source software on a future agenda?
Yeah, but I didn't know like, you know, who, who, you know, but.
I had to be able to talk to it, like maybe someone from the district could present and then we could use someone.
I don't know.
Was it an expert in it or?
And there've been a couple of times, you know, my husband has his friend who actually does open source solutions for schools, but he lives in Washington, you know? So there was a time where he was gonna come out and visit another friend and we were all gonna have dinner and it just never worked out. So I guess probably I would just have to do a little research on my own and see who might be a good person in the community or somewhere. Because I, you know, I don't remember if it was David Zook or Vince, what's Vince's last name? Vince, he was an adult, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
But one of them seemed fairly knowledgeable about it too. So perhaps if I talked to them, they would maybe know somebody and between them and my husband or somebody, I don't know. But I just think that they were talking about the savings in the school in England and it was just kind of, it was amazing how much money they were saving. It was like hundreds of thousands of dollars in these subscriptions every year for the software. And so, you know, it was, it was a difficult change for this school. And I, you know what, I could always send a link for the article to Hilda if you're interested in it, she can even tell everybody, but.
So, yeah, that could be put into a board bulletin then. And then if you decide at some point that you want to, feel free to talk with the administration about this or continue. And if you want to have it put on, then we can always add it at another time. And even if you wanted to add it today but not, you know, schedule it yet.
Yeah, okay, well, it's already in there. Now I just have to, I'll just have to like pick it up, you know? Because I know I could speak to it, but then maybe, you know, maybe somebody else who also has experience actually in it, I mean, and what did it look like, you know?
Okay, and then I think, Hilda, and I can't remember if I said this out loud here or if it was somewhere else, that I wanted to put on a discussion of our school district's wellness policy. Does that sound familiar to you that maybe in late June I might have added that?
It's on here.
Okay, then I will add that right now. Because our wellness policy says that we are to report out on it once a year to the governing board on its implementation.
Is that for kids or for adults?
It's for students, but.
Can that also include info on like partnerships with like Banner? Like remember when we had that here a couple of years ago and there was actually a clinic on campus and other things that we've done to bring wellness resources in?
Okay, sure. Okay, sure.
Because I knew that went away because of funding on their end, so that was so awesome. It was such a great partnership.
Think of specifics, and I can finish writing this after we adjourn, so if anyone wants to make that motion.
We don't need to make.
Oh, sorry, that's right, we don't need to make, that's why everyone's looking at me. We can't motion, we can't in fact, so I'm going to go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned then. Thank you, everyone.